Hey, you should move into Ward 4 and then you can resign.
How's your day?
Okay, seven o'clock.
Monday, May 20th, 7:00 PM.
Yes, sir. Fingers.
Here.
Bolts.
Here.
Revolt.
Here.
Wherein.
Yeah.
And thought that.
Here.
Six present.
Motion to excuse Member Keith and she will be joining us if you would.
So, second.
Favor.
I have opposed motion carried.
Okay, I will turn it over to Director Deordre. We have a presentation from Nate Green from Montrose Group.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to present to you this evening from the Montrose Group, Nate Green. We have engaged them as our consultant in putting together the city's first downtown redevelopment districts. As you recall, this was new legislation introduced by State Representative slash Senator Kirk Schering a couple of sessions ago in the Ohio Legislature. Nate's company has done about 12 of these DRDs throughout Ohio and is one of the leading experts in that. And we've been working on this for approximately nine months to get it to this point, to bring this here for all of you to review, have questions, and talk about the process forward and how this is going to be a game changer for North Canton.
All right, thank you, Pat. Thank you all, members of council, for having me here tonight to talk about this. As Pat said, we've been meeting for about nine months to really put together the plans, put together the districts. I think we met Mayor Mark Darrell two months ago, three months ago? I know that it was snowing when I went back. It snowed really bad when I went back, so it was when it was cold out. But, so, I'm going to talk from that presentation that's up there. But you all have in North Canton, I think halfway back, the actual economic development plan that we have developed. So, what I talk about in the PowerPoint presentation is really based on the economic development plan that you have. As Pat said, my name is Nate Green with the Montrose Group. We're an economic development consulting firm that's based in Columbus. We do economic development plans just like these. We've done, in the last two, in the last four years, we've done about, I think we've done 13 of these downtown redevelopment district plans, and we've done another 10 or so economic development plans that are more strategic planning, more community-wide than just the DRDs. My background is in economic development. I've been in economic development for the last 20 years. I spent 14 of the 20 in the public side of economic development. I worked at the Ohio Department of Development to start my career. I worked at the local level in Pickaway County, which is just south of Columbus. I went back to, back to the Department of Development in 2011, and I helped start Jobs Ohio. If you do or don't like Jobs Ohio, it's not my fault. I left there a long time ago, so, but all the good stuff was there when I was there. But anyway, so, and then I've been doing this for the last four years. And I've had, we, as I said, we do a lot of these plans with communities across the state of Ohio. You know, and so we think we really kind of understand what's going on and what it means to the community. So, what I'm going to go over, I'm going to start by talking about downtown redevelopment districts in general, what they are, how they work, where they came from. And then I'm going to talk about specifically the, what we're calling the Hoover District DRDs. And I'll tell you why. It'll be obvious probably to you all, but I'll tell you why they're named Hoover District Downtown DRDs. So, let's go to the first one. So, these downtown, these DRDs were really started to talk about historical preservation. And it was a tool that was passed, or became law in September 2016. That Representative Kirk Schering was the one that really was the impetus behind that getting passed. He's, you all know him well, obviously, and he's been behind a lot of things like that. But when this was passed, he was the one that did that. They, they put this law in place. It's actually based on Michigan law. And it is, it says it's a downtown redevelopment district, but really, that's a misnomer. It's in, we're going to talk about in your downtowns here, but it can be anywhere. And the, and the key is that these DRDs have to have an historic anchor. So, they have to have something that's either an historic building that's on the National Register of Historic Places. It has to have a building that's on a local Register of Historic Places. Or, like you have here, it has to have a group of buildings that are on, that are in a historic district that are on the National Register. So, here, we have the Hoover Company Historic District. So, all of these DRDs I'm going to talk about are based, they have a basis in that Hoover District, Hoover Company Historic District. They are, these DRDs are incentive, encourage, encouraging capital investment in downtown North Canton. They're really used as a vehicle to take increases in property tax provided by new building investment to fund building rehabilitation on those buildings or buildings that are in the DRD to fund infrastructure. And also, they can fund, 20% of the revenues can fund organizations that support economic development in the DRD in the area. DRDs are, they deal with the increase in property taxes, but they're not an increase in property taxes themselves. So, when IRG decides they're going to, you know, make an investment in that building and they're going to put $30 million into that building, that's going to generate new property taxes on that building, and we're going to use that increase in property taxes to go into the DRD. That's how it works in all of the DRDs. Yes, sir.
As an example, so right now, it's a unfinished building based on a certain amount of value. So, you're saying that, because like the CRA's were kind of a big issue.
Yep.
And so now the DRD for schools and whatever, so you got raw value, then they get 100% of.
Yep.
Or they get 30% of the improved value? Is that how it works roughly?
Yeah, so, right, so that's, that's, so today, they get 100% of whatever that value is.
Which is down here.
That's right, exactly.
Or, okay, put 30, 40 million into the project, and we have a lot more hustle-bustle.
Yep.
That value then drops, or goes dramatically up.
Yep.
The smaller percentage is still pretty attractive.
Yeah, that's exactly right. So, the way that this works is, as Councilman Fonte?
Yeah, Dominic Fonte, yes, my.
Okay. As Dominic has said, that these ways the DRDs work is that that increase in value, that 100% increase, 70% goes into the DRD. The other 30% goes to the other entities, the tax levying agencies, that will normally go to the school district being the larger one, larger of all of us. But, you're exactly right. There, this is an encouragement and incentive for these, in these areas. So, they're getting 30% of that, and they're only getting it for, that's only in place for 10 years. So, it's a good deal. Let's see, so, that last point up there is really, they can be used for redevelopment properties. They can range from commercial, office, mixed-use, retail, industrial. They can't go for 100% residential, but mixed-use means, mixed-use is usually commercial, retail, residential. So, we can, we can use this DRD in a place that's mixed-use. We just couldn't do it to renovate a home. That's, you know, a single-family house. So, next slide. We've talked about this already, but the DRD is for no more than 70% of any taxes. So, then, you know, with the CRA, you can do up to 100%. With the DRD, it's only by law, we can only do, we can only do 70%. DRDs can go anywhere up to 30 years, but anything over 10 years, the school district has to approve. And what we've talked about is just doing this for 10 years. And I think Pat and you've talked with the school district already about what that means. Under 10 years, we have to notify them. We don't have to get their permission to notify them. So, certainly, Pat's had discussions with the school, the school district. What will happen each year, like with property taxes that are collected now, the county treasurer, the county auditor will assess these buildings, the values of these buildings. The increase over what the baseline is today will be collected by the Stark County Treasurer. Stark County Treasurer, then, twice a year, will send a check to North Canton. And then you, as the governing body for North Canton, will decide how to appropriate those funds. You have to, those have to go into a separate account for, you know, government, government accounting rules. We have to put those in a separate account. But we set up separate accounts for those DRD funds to go into, and you decide where those funds are going to go. So, I talked about this a little bit, but this, this is just a, you know, pictorial of how the revenues are generated in the DRD. We have a building investment that increases the value of that building, that therein increases the property tax. That property tax, 70% of that goes to the DRD. The other 30% goes to the agencies that would give it otherwise. And then, we have, we have the uses of funds for the area. So, the next slide is the, is the use of the funds. I talked about this a little bit, but there's really four uses of those funds. The first are, you can make, with those DRDs, with those revenues, you can make grants to buildings that are historically designated buildings in the DRD. So, here, we have the Hoover Company Historic District. So, the buildings that are certainly as anchors that are in the district, we can make grants to those, to those building owners for rehabilitation of those buildings.
That doesn't necessarily mean for the same company or individual that's paying the property tax.
That's correct. That's correct.
So, you could have a company A that is, is paying the property tax, but you can give it to company B as long as they're in that.
As long as they're in the same DRD. That's correct, Mayor. Yes, that's exactly right. And actually, that's the same case with number two. So, you can make loans to buildings that are in the DRD but aren't historic. So, when I talk about the maps, we'll talk about the buildings that are the anchors in the historic district but are outside of that historic district, but they're in the DRD. Those that aren't historic buildings, we can make loans to those buildings, building owners. Now, there is nothing in state law that dictates what those loans, loans look like. So, as a, as a city council, as an administration, we can decide what those loans look like and how they, how they go out and how they may come back. Yes, sir.
Nate, it's not uncommon to see loans that bear no interest or loans that are in conditions of net forgivable. Are forgivable loans prohibited on those grounds?
They are not. They're not prohibited, right? No, they're not prohibited. No, so we, and that's my, yeah, exactly to my point, Darrell. We can, if we want to, if we want to use it as an incentive to make loans to people to, you know, all throughout these DRDs, we can make loans that are zero interest or that are zero interest for a certain amount of time. And if they meet job, job projections, or they meet capital investment projections, or whatever the case may be, you can decide to forgive those loans at the end of that term. We can also, with the DRD revenues, we can make investments in public infrastructure. So, we can invest in, public infrastructure is a pretty wide, wide array of things. So, we can do, you know, you think of roadways as public infrastructure, sewer and water, fiber optic, fiber optics, all those kinds of things that would be public in nature, public uses are public infrastructure. So, things that typically the city would, the city would own or some other public entity, we can make those improvements to public infrastructure.
So, for example, we could use some of this money for the Portage Corridor, for the gateway in the city.
Has to be in the DRD.
It has to be in the DRD.
So, if the DRD is, if that, if the road is part of that corridor, then certainly, we could, we could use those funds for the corridor.
Like a parking deck?
Like apartment, Mark, we do that. But yeah, public, that's, if it's a public, if it's a, if it's a, you know, parking deck that's a public parking deck, then absolutely. We haven't seen use, DRDs used for a parking deck yet, but DRDs operate a lot like TIFs, Tax, Incentive, Finance Districts. So, TIFs, there are several. I'm trying to think, are there any in Canton or Akron, Darrell, that are funded by a TIF? I don't remember.
Some projects in downtown. There are projects in downtown.
Yeah, so there are some in downtown Canton. There are.
Old Farm.
Yeah.
I thought City of Greenness.
City of Greenness, that's what I'm saying. But there's, I know of, in the city of Cleveland and in Columbus, they have TIFs that fund parking garages. Back to you, back to my question. So, we could use DRDs to fund that.
So, just to clarify, like, we have, you know, the TIFs, the Tax, Incentive, Finance. We have the CRA, the city. So, all of them really, they're in the same category that when a project is upgraded, like, let's say, the Hoover District, and that property value, let's say, when it's vacant, it's sitting at the values of $1 million, and then with the improvements, it goes up to $40 million. So, along with that increase, the property tax is called.
Right.
So, when the owner is paying the property tax, if we have this downtown district, then the money is, the property tax is paid to the treasurer. Then the treasurer, based on our determination, will give a percent, give a percentage up to 70% of that property tax back to the city. And then we can spend it.
For one of those uses.
For one of those uses.
Correct.
Whereas, the CRA, the city can determine how, 50%.
Correct. And the big difference between the CRA and the DRD, the CRA is an payment. They don't pay taxes.
They don't pay the tax.
That increase, in your example, if it goes from $1 million to $40 million, we have the CRA, they just don't pay the tax. With the DRD, in that example, it goes from $1 million to $40 million, whatever that increase is, they still pay all the taxes. But 70% comes into the DRD, the rest of it goes to the other agencies. So, that's really the difference. There's a, there's always a big public purpose with CRA, because, you know, it's used.
More incentive, more closely resembles a tax, a good financing word.
Absolutely.
Actually paying the property tax.
I mean, like, here's what I see as the big home run. You got this rotting building across the street, nothing's happening. With this incentive, we take this $1 million or $30 million or $20 million building, turn it into a $40 or $50 million building, and we're getting 30% money more based on the improved value. Plus, then, the incentive is to give that money back for us to divvy up on all those four categories to be able to incentivize more business, more stimulation, which ultimately means more revenue for the city. So, it'd be less burden for the tax constituents, us people.
Right.
And we keep our utility cost every more affordable. So, that's the only piece we're missing downtown, so we're excited.
Hello. All right, so, do you have any more questions about the particular districts? Pat?
Nate, just make sure we have just.
Oh, I missed the last one.
The last one. Was that entity, yes, yes.
Yeah, that's important. So, we can also, of the new DRD revenues, we can take 20% of that and put it into an entity that is an organization that is charged with economic development in the DRDs. The state law doesn't, it doesn't, it gives, you know, RRC codes for what those are. But, it could be a nonprofit entity, it could be an entity like a community-proved corporation. It could be a chamber of commerce, it could be an economic development corporation, and those kinds of things. You do have a CIC here, obviously, but you can use those funds so that they're charged with economic development in the DRD. But you can take 20% of those increased revenues, and it can go to that CIC to use for operations of the CIC. So, just another, you know, another use, and that, you know, that helps fund economic development. Thank you, Pat, because I forgot that one. All right, so, I'm going to talk about the particular DRDs here. That is a rendering of what we hope the Hoover District looks like when IRG is able to fill it all out. We got that from their, the renderings that they came up with their first, first, decided what they're going to be, first rule of the project. So, the Hoover District itself, the National Register, is, it's really based on that building and the buildings around it and next to it, right? It's really the, all the company buildings. But the good news is, is that it also encompasses some of the buildings that are, are they north of it, Pat?
Yes.
Yeah, that are north of it. I'm confused on my geography right now. But they are north of that one. So, there are buildings that are north of that. So, you'll see when we talk about these DRDs, remember, we have to have an anchor, an historic anchor that's in the district. Then, but we have to link those through the streets, because they have to be continuous districts. They don't have to be continuous, but they have to be linked in that. So, that'll be important when I talk about that, so, the next slide. So, what we've talked about is doing eight of these DRDs. These downtown redevelopment districts can be no more than 10 acres. So, all of these are right about, they're, they're all between nine and 10 acres. And they all are, again, anchored in the historic, historic, the Hoover, Hoover Company Historic District. The primary goal of this will be to encourage new capital investment. One of the, one of the goals is they're going to be redevelopment of that site across the street we talked about. The other goal will be to encourage new capital investment throughout these DRDs and throughout the downtown. The, you know, what we, what we pulled from the IRGs, the things that they've rolled out, but also in discussions we've had with them. I mean, they really, you know, they want to redevelop that, that space into all kinds of mixed uses. They've redeveloped some of it, but they have all different kinds of ideas what they want to use. Residential, commercial, retail, which would be great. I think it's, you know, that's an awesome, awesome thing for your downtown to have that site redeveloped. The great thing too, I think, for you all to know, is that as we put this plan together, they have really, the IRG has a lot of interest in what you all are doing with these DRDs. Because they want to see it happen. They want to see it happen, and they want to see that, that being sent potentially to them as well, of these, of their investment happening. So, you know, Pat and I have had several conversations with them. I get, I get an email every couple of weeks from Peter Goffstein with IRG asking where the DRD is. So, they're very interested in what goes on here. That number, that $4.6 million over a 10-year period, that number comes from what IRG's planned investment is just in that site. So, that doesn't even include any other investment in the, in these DRDs. That really is just based on that one site. So, you can see that that just one site, that increase in investment can have a huge impact just on, you know, on these areas. So, let's go to the next slide. So, this is, one of the things that we are recommending in the report, this is not state law, but it's something that we think is, is important to, to all of you, and is important with, you know, for the, for the health of the, the health of the DRD, the health of, the health of, you know, kind of going on forward, is that we set up this DRD Operating Committee. And I actually have it in two places, but I'm going to talk about this DRD Operating Committee. So, as, as I talked about, every year, the Stark County Treasurer will give money to, give the revenues to North Canton that are generated through the DRDs. And then, you all, as a council, will decide, but a kind of as a step in between that is we want to set up this operating committee that really looks into what the health of the DRD, what's happening with the DRD, but also, just to reach out to property owners, be the group that reaches out to the owners and says, "We have this DRD, what are you doing, what do you see with it, what do you want to see happen? What are the infrastructure improvements that might be needed? What is needed by your business?" And then, report all of that information to all of you, and also to the Ohio Development Services Agency, which we have to do every year on an annual basis anyway. So, that's a, that's a step that we want to put in, in between all of that. I think that we, what we envisioned is that group would be, you know, that group would probably have six or seven members of it. It would be, I think we talked about the mayor being on it, the director of administration, the director of law, potentially, the chair of the CIC, some business owners maybe in the DRD districts, maybe even a member of the council. I think we talked about that too, Pat. So, that's something, again, that this DRD Operating Committee, it's not part of state law, we don't have to have it, but we think it helps to operate that DRD and have, you know, somebody that's kind of overseeing what happens. And we can also, because you have your CIC and it serves as an economic development function, that operating committee can sit within the CIC as well. It's really up to you how you want to do that. The next slide. So, this is, there are these eight DRD districts. This is the first DRD. So, this is one parcel, and it's all of the Hoover's, or not all of Hoover's site, but it's the, it's the front part over there, the buildings over there, and then it's the manufacturing facilities behind it. This is, this site itself is almost exactly 10 acres, so that one parcel, you know, makes up one, one DRD. That, that appraised value, to your point, Dominic, the appraised value of that property today is $2.1 million. And it generates $50,000 in real estate taxes. We hope that they put a lot more money into it, it generates a lot more than that.
Definitely.
Number two is the next one. Again, this is one parcel, and it's, this is the manufacturing, yeah, this is the manufacturing facility, the offices, is that right?
I think this is Harvard Square.
Southeast Maple.
Yep.
The back side.
Yep, it's the back side of those.
Sister back. Yes.
So, this is, this is also one parcel. It is, actually, this one's a little bit less. I think this is about eight acres, but the.
Eight. Yep.
Not eight. I wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do it at eight. It's eight acres. The value of that is about $11 million today, and generates $260,000 in real estate taxes. All right, so, number three is where we get into parcels that are, that are not necessarily the Hoover Company facilities, but are kind of based. So, that Hoover District, the Hoover Company District really goes from Maple up to.
Fifth Street.
It goes up to Sixth, right? Is it, is it Fifth?
Fifth.
Okay, so it goes up to Fifth Street.
So, Nate, just to clarify for everybody that's, that's looking at this, is that really all of these properties are interconnected, but if you, if you're looking at the aerial map, the shaded area keeps changing from one slide to the next.
Correct. Everything in blue is the, is the, is that what you're asking, Mike?
Right.
So, so is that one, this is, this is DRD number three.
Correct.
You don't see DRD number one on there or number two.
You're right.
No, they're on there, but they're not shaded.
Correct. None of them overlap. That's right. It can't overlap.
Can't overlap.
So, this, these are still all in the Hoover District. The ones that are taken out are because we use those in other DRDs. So, you'll see those in the future DRDs. So, go to the next one, four. So, number four, so this is, you see, we have a couple of those there that, we have some that are on the, on the west side of the street. They go across the street. So, what we're doing here is we're basically taking the buildings, some of the buildings that are in the Hoover Company District, and then we're linking them to all the other, to the other side of the street, because the other side of the street is not in the, in the historic district. That's what we're doing here. You know, again, these are all, these are all 10 acres. That value of that is $4.4 million with $100,000 in real estate taxes. All right, so number five. So, number five, this is a, this is one where we got a little creative. So, you can see on the southern part, you'll see the one parcel that's in the Hoover Company Historic District. And then we go up Main Street, and we connect to, I think, three parcels, maybe four.
And Nate, just, I know that we use the street as the connector.
Exactly, that's a good point. So, we use it, so we can, by state law, we can use the street as the connector. So, and we've confirmed that. So, and we've confirmed that with the Department of Tax Equivalence. If you all want to talk to them, I'm joking. You really want to talk to the Ohio Department of Tax. I have a meeting with them in front of me, it's exciting. But, so this basically, so what we do is we have those parcels that are in the district. We go a little, we connect by the street. We connect, and actually, it's more than three because there's another street. So there's, I think, six parcels. We jump over a parcel because it's connected to some of the apartments that are behind it. We picked up a couple of commercial properties and then we go across the street and we pick up what is today, I believe, a trailer park. Is that right, Pat? Yeah. So that's a trailer park there. And really, the point, you know, the reason for these is we see these as properties that have potential value for future commercial use and we think there may be value there. We also may think it's something that somebody's going to do something else with those parcels and we want to use the DRDs as incentive to, to help them do that. So that's the reason that we picked, picked these parcels. So number six, this, so if you look over on the west side of the street, I'm sorry, is that right? On the west side of the street. Well, over in the historic district, there's one parcel that's in the Hoover Historic District. And then we come down Main Street, go across Charlotte, and we pick up what is the property that is currently owned by the school district. And we really thought as we were talking through that, that this is a great, you know, the school there is, it's not historic, but it's old. It may be historic at some point. So we thought that maybe somebody was, may want to restore that, or they want to build on all of the, the property that's there today. So we really thought that that was valuable and we wanted to, we wanted to have that as a DRD.
And the reason that those houses are not in it is they're residential?
So there's two reasons. One is because they're residential, but that's really not the most important reason. The other is if we picked them all up, we'd have more than 10 acres.
Okay.
That big, there are only, I think in this, there are only three parcels. That, the parcel that's over on the east side that's in the district, that's one parcel. And then I think there's two more, maybe even only one, where the school owns the rest of that, where the old school is and then the, what, you know, the field, the field is there. So that's, that's part of it. And that's, it's weird the way it's set up too, because that little jagged edge is up there. That just is because that parcel that jumps up into it, it just happened to be where it goes. And these are all, so the way I, the way that we got these maps, this is actually, I didn't draw these. That would be crazy for me to try to draw them. These are, we got these all from, Stark County has a great GIS thing. So I, I can pull all these up and, and, you know, that, it populates, it populates it and it populates what the acreage are. So it actually works out really, really well. And when we go to the Ohio Department of Tax, that's what they use as well. So that's a good, that's a good thing.
But working with the city, we identified the areas that we wanted to be in it and then from that, you were able to use the GIS to specify the parcels.
Exactly. All right, so the next one is seven. And this one again includes one parcel that's in the Hoover Historic District and then includes the parcel. One of them is where we are right now. And then we, you know, move down the street and we pick up some of the commercial properties, a few parking lots that maybe we develop at some point. But really, that is really all about, you know, development along, along that street. And then our, our final DRD is DRD number eight. This picks up one parcel that is in the district. It's in between number one and number two. And then it goes down and it picks up the YMCA and then the, you know, kind of down the street to, is it Bactel Street?
Yeah.
Is our, is our southern border of that. And it picks up all those properties along that street, on the, on the west side of that street that, that we really thought made sense, so. So these, you know, and, and as Pat talked about, I think the, we spent a lot of, we spent a lot of time going through these because we wanted to really identify places in the downtown that we thought had potential for growth. We thought if we had this incentive in place, that they'd be able to use this DRD and really use it as an incentive. But we also had to be mindful of, we had to make sure that there was an anchor back into the historic district. Because if we don't have an anchor in the historic district, you know, it's kind of game over. We can't, we can't use the DRD if we have to have that. So that's really, the, the way that these maps are put together is based on, you know, those two things. Where we think, you know, where we kind of identify the commercial investment might happen and also the meaning that we had to have an historic anchor. We also had to be mindful that there are no more than 10 acres and that includes, that 10 acres includes the, the streets. Not here, because these are continuous, but on those other ones where they jump across the street, we have to include the street in that. So that's, that's why we included, included that there. And I'm going to go on just to steps for approval. What questions do you have though? Any questions about the maps?
Yes.
Okay, so you've been working on it six months?
Yep.
You've done 13 of them in a couple of years?
Yes.
How soon can you activate this? Bring it to us. That's what I want to do. I want it a year, or a year sooner.
No, that's what, no, I mean, actually, that's what, that's what my next slide is about. Sorry.
Hey, one question on that slide that I was questioning one of those houses.
Yes.
If those become something that we need, are you able to add to this later or create another one? Or you, that area over there, if it's going to be developed, probably require those houses.
And you know what, Mark? You can absolutely do that. Again, it has, we have to meet that test of having an historic anchor, but you can always create more of these, right? There, there is no, one of the things in the law is that they can only be 10 acres, but you can create as many of them in your community as you want, right? So we did some communities, like I've done as little as one in a community, to as many as, I was going to say nine, but I actually think that your eight ties to the other community that I worked with, the City of Greenville over in Dark County. They did, they did eight as well. But it's really, you know, that, City of Greenville just, they have a lot of historic buildings. They're a really, really old town. Here, we, you know, we would have liked more. I mean, truthfully, when Pat and I first sat down and we laid out the map, we looked at all the areas that we thought might make sense and we had a lot more, but we didn't have that historic anchor. So we have to have that historic anchor. I wasn't able to do it, but certainly, we could go back later. I, exchange.
And you said the road, bridges, the anchor.
It does. It does. But I had to be, the, the challenge is though too, that anchor, we included in these maps, we included properties that then we could tie, you know, through the, through the street, tie those other properties in. So I, like, I couldn't, we, we actually, we'll talk about some properties north of Main Street.
And we talked north of Main Street. We went down Maple into Wise area. We've looked at a whole bunch of different ways to get there, but you have to pick a parcel that's in the district. And then if you're going to go down that way, you're connecting it with a road. The anchorage that the road consumes is part of that 10 acres. And then what we were finding is that we just couldn't get that far out without another historic structure.
Would you consider a century home a historic structure?
Well, it has to.
If it's in a commercial area?
So it has to be on the.
You know, I'm talking.
It has to be on the National Register of Historic Places or on the local Register of Historic Places or be in a historic district that's on a federal register.
There's a central farmhouse down there that could, could you get it on the register?
Is that the Hoover?
If we wanted to take it all the way down to Whipple, could we take it down Maple to Whipple?
If you can get it in one of those three spots, then you can use that as a new anchor.
Because we have all that lane and the long Whipple, you know, we can do something creative with as well. We can talk about that all over.
All right, so, so what I want to go through next is really the steps for approval to, to, you know. You're so inclined and you, you know, want to, want to get this done. Here's, here's how we do this. So you have, we've done all the, kind of the background work. You have the districts. You have the economic development plan that we put together. You actually have, I think, you, you have, I'm sure, you have the ordinances, the ordinance to create this. We have notification letters to the, to the school district and we have a public notice. So we kind of done all the paperwork, all set. So the next step to do this is that you have to, you have to hold a, a public hearing. We have to notify the public in a, you know, a paper or, and also on, on a website would make sense. We also have to notify all the property owners that are in the DRDs and we have all that and we have their addresses. And that public hearing, like most public hearings, is, is 30 days after you announce it. We do a public hearing. Then, or in, in that timeframe, you introduce the DRD ordinance. You know, you do your first reading of the DRD ordinance. And you can do that, you can do that before the public hearing, you can do that at the public hearing, you can do that after the public hearing. You, you don't have to wait really to, to do that until, you don't have to wait for the public hearing to do that. You introduce that and then based on timing, by state law, you can adopt the ordinance 30 days after the public hearing. Now certainly, we have to figure out, you know, if you do three readings of, of your ordinances, we have to figure out how that lines up. But by law, we have the, we have the public hearing. 30 days after that, we can finalize that and adopt the DRD ordinances. So that's our, that's our, our steps at least to get that approved from a public standpoint, having public hearings.
Yes, sir. And also the approvals that are required, the notifications and actually the approval of the DRD are two separate matters.
Absolutely. So if you go to the, the next slide or, so that's, so we have to, to exactly your point, Mayor, we have to notify, and I'm actually missing one notification on here. We have to notify the school district of the DRD ordinance. So what we do is we send them a letter. It says we're, we're holding a public hearing this date, or I'm sorry, it actually says we're going to propose to adopt the resolution on this date. And here is the, the proposed ordinance that includes that economic development. So we have to send that, send that to the, send that to the school district. They accept the notification. Now that just means that they say we got it. Because they, they don't, we don't need their, we don't have to get their approval. They just send the letter back to, to the mayor or to Pat and they say, we got it. We got, we got the letter. Yes, sir.
Do we need a letter or do we need a signed receipt that the letter has been delivered?
I believe that we actually need notification. We need, there is a, you'll see, on the notification, there's a, there's basically a signature that says we received it. That's really what we're doing.
What if they declined to sign it?
They would.
Just do a return receipt, just send it.
Yeah, you do it on certified mail, so we know.
Yeah, but does that, certify receipt, does that suffice?
Yeah, well, because all we really have to do is notify them.
Okay, that's what, that's what I wanted to know.
We have to do it by certified mail, but yeah.
Okay. So certification on the mail is return receipt, question, is sufficient?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, good point.
Good point, but we're, we're well beyond any discussions with the.
Understood. Okay.
Okay.
Worth, so.
So the other notification is we have to notify all the, we have two other notifications. We have a public notification that we're doing a public hearing. We also have to do a notification to all the, all the property owners in the district. So we'll, we'll get those letters out as soon as. Yes.
I believe we also have to send it to planning and they have to have a public hearing and recommend it. It's a low change.
They don't.
They don't.
This is, this is certain, this is, this is an ordinance, you know, unless you have your own rules, but the only rule by the ORC is what I've laid out for you.
So, okay, once this all happens, all right, we get the letters out, we do the public, we pass it?
Yep.
How soon can we start making stuff happen? Like, once or through?
Once it is approved, that's when it goes into effect and we.
Easy over there, Tom.
Yeah, once it's approved, then we can start having conversations with those property owners.
Yeah, because we've been waiting for a long time for the downtown development area, so I just want to know, do we have to wait another year now?
Nope.
Okay.
It's effective when you pass it.
In each one of the parcels or group of parcels that might be under development, each one of those would be a separate agreement and negotiation for, for, for what it is that the, that the operating committee of the council is granting credit.
That's exactly right. So if we decide that we're going to, we're going to enter into an agreement with any of these property owners, that we're going to take the DRD revenues and give them back a grant or a loan, we would enter into a development agreement with them. And that's something that we, you know, we negotiate, the administration will negotiate and bring, bring to you for approval.
Yes, and just to be clear, it isn't that just because you pass this, that all of a sudden it's all done, that's just sets the groundwork for then the next stage of this, which is somebody's approaching us about redeveloping property and they want to put an agreement together. And Nate, regarding the separate account, is it necessary to have a, a multiple separate account, one for each DRD? Or can one separate account have all eight?
I believe that you should have that eight.
Sorry, Mark.
I, I was going to ask a similar question. I noticed the draft ordinance was one ordinance for all eight districts.
We can do that.
We can do one ordinance.
We can do that. And the state, the ORC said we can do that. But we do have to specify that you have a different.
Okay. And when we talk about infrastructure, you mentioned roads or, you know, sewers, those are the common things we think of. What about fiber?
That's, that's public infrastructure.
And does the law specify the approval as far as once you adopt the DRD and then once you take action, of course, each, each individual action has to go back to council approval?
Well, you know, again, that's, there's nothing in state law that says that, Mayor. That's, that's again, whatever, whatever you do, right? If you have the development agreements and you bring them back to council for approval, nice one.
So you have the flexibility. You can, you can write it up in the ordinance whether it goes back to council or it goes to a committee or.
Or to the administration, absolutely.
And then also, is there a separate operating committee for each of the DRDs? Or can one operating committee cover all eight DRDs?
I think we do one for all of them. Because again, that's not in state law, so I think we just do one that covers all, all the DRDs.
Well, this is kind of off the wall question I was asking Darryl about it. Can this be used to build schools?
Yes. I mean, you could.
School owned property or if a school was in that, you could use their own tax and build their schools.
Yeah, you can either.
School's pay tax.
No, but the, the area would get property tax.
They would proceed.
They don't pay.
No, they don't pay. They don't pay, but that property tax itself though would go up in that area, wouldn't it? To be used then for building a school?
They are exempt. But if you had a, if you had somebody else developing on the wall.
Hold on, take a deep breath. One at a time, please. So I was saying, now off the wall, like I said, but has that ever happened?
Uh, it is not that I'm, I'm aware of. But, but actually, the, the, the answer to your question is you could use the DRD funds to fund a public building. That's the answer to your question. And a school building is a public building, as long as it's in the, in the.
And off of that, that public building or the school does not necessarily have to be within the district.
No, it would have to be in the district. One of these. Darryl, are you going to ask me an off-the-wall question?
I'm your finance expert. But to pick up on Mark's question, let's assume we put an arrangement together with the school district and agreed to. And we would not take the proceeds from the DRD. We could take the proceeds from the income tax generator. And that's not part of the DRD, but through council matter of action, direct that income tax, like payable taxes, to the school.
Yeah, we could do that.
And create a revenue stream that would pay for part of its construction.
Mm-hmm. We could do that. It's public money going to other public entities and school districts have income taxes.
Sure.
I think that's my last. Oh, no, you won't have to do that. You could go to the last slide, I haven't covered that one. All right, what are their questions, comments? That aren't, you know, that you can type faster.
Sounds good, thank you.
You're welcome. And if you do have any questions, yeah, well, I have a PowerPoint, but I think also in the, in the plan is my information. Pat knows how to do it all. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, you don't have to ask me more questions, Darryl. It's, it's.
He's really sad to, to leave for the discussion. He should be able to, like, tell her.
Yeah, sure. Just let me know. All right, thank you all very much. Take care.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nate. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let the record reflect, Mr. Keith, I'm going to 7:05 PM. We are in our committee, so I'm going to let her take it up.
Where are we at?
We're at the.
Well, we have, we're going to put the, we've got the first reading.
Well, I think you guys, we have to follow the layout of what he's done.
So we can set a public hearing?
Yeah. Can you set that?
We can have a council calendar in front of us.
Well, I think I, I, yeah, I think what I would like to do, if you do set it, set it exactly at 30, I'd like to confound the law director this week to make sure that we got everything set up as far as each notice and we've got it by property owners and the logistics that we have to put together.
Do you want to wait and set it next Monday or do you want to just set it for like six or seven hours?
I think we're more comfortable if it's all right that we can wait until next morning and make that determination.
That's fine, you tell us, whatever you think works.
Well, we don't meet next Monday because it's Memorial Day.
Right.
Well, we don't meet next Monday because it's Memorial Day. But that would be okay, then, all of that, actually.
Okay.
Now, we have a request that in the period between now and the public hearing, that we pull this back up and let's just walk through this draft line by line and make sure we're completely comfortable with the language. I don't, didn't find anything that I found troublesome, but yet we may still want to look at some detail. So we have it back on the committee in some way. If you would expect some... So we want to bring it back for June the third? I don't know if that's a regular schedule, maybe the meeting that is...
You are the chairman of the committee.
That's fine, we'll bring it back June third.
Item B is the rezoning of the parcels over behind the district. Thank you. We had a public hearing yesterday, a couple weeks ago, we had nobody still seen for events. I assume everybody's okay with this? Any questions from council? We'll put on the agenda for surgery in June sometime?
June third, or...
No.
Well...
June tenth. No.
What we talked about, I think, what I was looking to do, because there's some people home pending for sale here, that if, I'm working with Laura, she indicated the tenth and the twenty-fourth.
Right.
Our regular meetings, we could squeeze on the seventeenth, setting up a regular meeting to give it a second reading, then the third reading could be on the twenty-fourth. And we really don't help this a lot.
Yes, I think that's okay with me if we...
Jeff, that's the note I've given you, that if you have a special council on the seventeenth to follow the committee.
Follow the committee on the seventeenth? Let's do that now, why don't we call, roll on that one, to add a special council meeting that would be the second reading of this. Why do we wish that?
And for which day?
Seventeenth. Seventeenth. June, June follows the regular committee.
So moved to have...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, so what exactly has happened on the seventeenth? There's two meetings?
Got a special council meeting, and we will have the second reading of this.
To follow the committee.
Following the committee. Regular committee.
And then the third reading, when?
The twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
So be the tenth, the seventeenth, and the twenty-fourth.
That works for you?
Done.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to item C, we sent over, or we're going to, we'd like to send over a question. The planning commission to, I can't remember what this one was, it was part of, they had an amendment or...
This is when you have a conditional use and then a special use. When you have a conditional use, it doesn't come back to council because it's actually something that's authorized and taught by ordinance, it's simply that you have two different zone areas and the planning commission simply confirms that there will be no harm from one to the other, and if it appears it will, they've set in some special conditions. But for a special use, it's zoning that you've not seen before. And I think the most recent that we've had with that was urban farming. And that wasn't part of any zoning that we had, and we had looked at that in a couple parcels that we were looking at, and I guess didn't seem suitable for what we were looking at, but that's something that does come back to council, so we wanted to clear that up. Just the way it was codified, it didn't appear clear what went from planning commission to council and what didn't, so this will clear up, and so it will be a little easier to understand.
All right, everyone understand? Okay, so that on. And then B, I'm going to let Steph and Darrell take over as far as flagpole fencing and what we've been going on right now.
We've had, we've had two constituents, one regarding offense and a second regarding flagpole, ask the planning commission and council to reconsider our current legislation. Right now, side yard fences were...
Three feet?
Were limited to three feet. And the standard height that's available for do-it-yourself is...
Forty-five, yeah.
It's more common, if you're going to put up a picket fence, to find it in excess of forty-eight inches. So we happen to have one of our more senior citizens, Stephanie Ward, who would like to put up something larger, she'd like to go to sixty. But it's the planning commission recommendation of us, so we'd like to kick it over to planning to come up with some ideas and actually bring the entire, the entire section into line with modern fencing materials that are available. For example, vinyl comes in certain sizes. And can we, can we bring a little more modern look to that to still meet our constituents?
Do you have to talk to an architect and, Nancy, an architect, and he said he would never go through, but it just can't find it anymore. It doesn't give you any, help with the dog or privacy or anything. So this constituent, she already has a fence, so she is, would you say five feet?
It's at least, it dates, probably his grandfather.
Yeah.
It's an old senior fence that was put up in the late fifties, and you know what these weathered meters look like.
Yeah, in parts look horrible. I mean, it's not horrible, but she wants to improve it, but she still wants it privacy, she feels it's safety-related and all that, and obviously, three feet does nothing. So I think it goes back to kind of looking at all of our legislation again, and why it's so important that we do that and bring it concurrent with the standards of our whole county.
Very common. So one of the problems we run into is the side lot, if you're on a corner.
On a corner.
Right, so that's the issue.
Yeah.
I think it should be six feet's fine on the sides, the front, the front has to be three to four, the back should be six foot, the side should be six foot, as long, if it's on a corner, you have to have a twenty-five feet in so it doesn't impair the driver from the stop sign. As long as it doesn't do that, I think that should be an acceptable course factor. You could put a six-foot out of bite there, natural fencing, what's the difference? So my point is that we need to revise the rules to reflect the 21st century.
Yeah.
And the corner people are getting screwed over.
It's the planning commission to do.
But I'm saying, the corner people are the ones that get screwed, because it's the front of the site, with the garage setbacks, with the...
Fencing? Three-foot fence in this particular instance is a seventy feet.
And the trash cans are taller than the size macro.
Yeah.
The trash cans are taller than three feet, because you need more...
Well, when they have a pool or something, I mean, I would think you'd want something higher than three feet for privacy, but, right, I mean, and... I thought there were four feet, I thought it was a requirement for four feet of the pool, but I don't know, that's, that's my... But I would say six feet, I'm on privacy, I got pulled last time I once I seen a pool.
If you have a safety standard.
Yeah. I'm just clear, so you're saying it's only three feet now inside yards?
Yeah.
I've just seen recent fences growing, do you have to be five to six feet tall?
They have illegal...
Because that's what they buy, they don't need one. No, no, this is put in by fence company.
They have it on it.
But you're right.
We need to revise it.
I mean, they find it, but like...
Do you agree, Ben?
Yes.
I agree. That's a good...
Move on from that.
And then the second issue is, I was contacted by a constituent who's interested in flagpole currently, it's fifteen feet, which is fine for a suburban ranch, he has a two-story home, which makes it short, and when you think that standard flag sizes are three by five, and you want to fly two flags on one pole, for example, a American flag and a service flag, that takes a fair amount of that pole, particularly when the, when the flag is, the lower flag is unwinged, so it hangs down.
What's our regulation now? I don't, you have to hit pole permit for footer, right? No, that's the only danger, if you keep going out, you got to make sure that things anchor, that they fall on the street.
Yeah, the order that you ask, that we ask the planning commission to advise, because we're going to take the...
Definitely. Kind of peel TV now. Well, I think that's probably why they instituted this in the first place, they didn't want a bunch of, the next guy has to have a higher pole than you, and the next guy's got to have another higher pole, and next thing you know, you got a bunch of lightning runs everywhere. I'm sure they instituted this because they want a bunch of different heights everywhere, right? So I don't know, is that a standard everywhere? Or is it, do we look at other standards and see what they have in other cities?
Sure. That's what the planning commission did. Okay. Again, we're shipping these two issues to the planning commission for record division.
Veterans will often have the US flag, state flag, and POW and IAA, this is your third. And as number one said, when it takes up the majority of the pole, it no longer appears regal, it's still...
Right on.
Okay, sounds good, we're doing it.
And go to your committee?
Yes.
All right, next up, Finance and Property Chairman, Claire.
Okay. So we're going to be, the meeting is, talk about this next few days, and try to make this happen, talk about it last week, and thinking about how we're going to now do the pool and golf course, and maybe kind of fund policy for that. Laura, do you want to say anything else about that, or Pat? Can you talk to them?
We'll start there. Or, right?
Just as far as the numbers, there's $8,000 of appropriations here, it's out of the general fund. The interim agreement that's been negotiated with the golf course operator calls for $5,000 a month management fee while a permanent agreement is negotiated. So assuming it will take about six months, that's $30,000 of this. The other fifty is to set up an initial operating account, to get them started with the operations of the course, and provide for some early capital needs and operating needs until they get their operations going.
Okay. So we're going to, that's our gathering for our first reading.
Yeah.
So we're going to that today, and then tomorrow, the second, or Thursday.
I was going to mention, yeah, because I can mention it, a special council meeting after this.
Okay.
Council agenda, so tomorrow morning, seven thirty AM for the second reading, Thursday, seven thirty for the...
Okay.
And just a housekeeping note, tomorrow morning's agenda is on your desk as well, just because it'll be early when we get in here, so...
Thank you.
Don't run off of it.
I already saw it.
Thank you.
Okay, and then B and C, we talked about a little bit last week. Laura, you got that on there really quick, you mentioned that levees were up for the sewer improvement and streets, and so I think we talked about putting this on this new number, right, so this just gets that process going.
Yes, this is the first step, there's two resolutions. This one will go to the county auditor to certify the amount that one mil generated, they're both one mil, five-year renewal.
One mil.
One mil, five-year renewal of taxes. And then, once this resolution goes through, then you need to do a second one to actually ask to place an ballot.
So that means no new taxes, correct?
That's correct, this is just a renewal to keep what we have for streets and so on and so forth.
Okay. That's it.
All right, next up, next up, Marcy Rubbish, Chairman of the Senate.
Well, this looks like you said...
I'm abstaining from this one?
Oh, yes.
Yes, thank you.
No, no, we don't even know, you're fine.
So next slide, next slide.
I should sell slides.
In the air, sir.
Yeah. So this is about the sledge depress, and I know we've had some talks of a sledge depress, so I'm a ma, I'm assuming that the current one is coming up today, because, I mean, that's why this is sent to us, the current bid or the current contract is running out, is that why this is up?
The current contract was a three-year contract with two, two-year extension. We opted to exercise an extension two years ago, and this kind of went back to the Washington University meeting, kind of breaking it up, this is what direction, I needed direction in which way we were going, but I think since then, I've got the direction, and that is to put this out as RFP for services rather than do an overextension.
Okay. So in the meantime, let's say we decide to do a sledge press.
This is for two years.
Right.
Okay, so, you know, in my calculation, even if we were moving forward with that, that that's not going to happen within this two-year period.
I would say it takes about five months to create, once you get going, so that must be...
Well, I mean, there's a lot, you know, I've yet to work on the project, but it takes five months, nine months just to bring a DRD here, and I've done, Portico, that was fifteen months, and I know how long these things take.
Sounds like government.
It takes a lot longer than you think, so...
In that case, that's what this is for, then, put out a bid, and if I have any questions or anything about, we've done this all standard protocol.
Okay.
We'll put that on. Do you need to have any emergency votes?
I do.
Yes, you do, okay, let's do it.
That's it, all right. Includes this agenda, all other...
I told you to do it, Jer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. We are adjourned from the committee, and I will call for a special council meeting Monday, May twentieth, two thousand nineteen, eight oh three PM. Laura, please call over for us.
Peters.
Here.
Bolts.
Here.
Serenel.
Here.
Revolt.
Here.
Peasling. Here, Weirin, here.
Here. Thank you, the Director of Flag, Mayor Hill, abstaining from this. Okay, at this time, if you wish to address, first of all, this is a special council meeting. We have two items on the agenda, please keep your remarks to these two items. And if you wish to discuss any of these two items, please step forward, state your name and address to the room.
Chukos, one three oh seven Prairie Street, southeast, North Hampton, Ohio. It is getting harder and harder and harder to come up here and watch what goes on with this group. Regarding the Arrowhead Agreement. The property is worth 2.2 million less than you paid for it. I have heard nobody up here lament, show their concern for that path you chose sixteen years ago. I've heard nobody express concern about the operating losses we've experienced year after year after year for sixteen years. Does anybody know what we've lost on an annual basis? I've dug through some of the records for years, I've probably got four banker boxes full of records, but it is getting so hard to present the facts to you people and no one cares. Absolutely do not care. You don't bring them up for discussion, you don't seem to want to know what these losses are. One would think, after losing millions and millions and millions, that you would reconsider your choices that you made in leasing this property out for golf and now managing it for golf. What do they say, the definition of insanity? Doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different outcome? The city now is taking the entire risk of continuing golf. Mr. DePietro has no risk whatsoever. You're paying him to settle there $5,000 a month, and we know what's coming down the pipe. The man's a businessman, he's not stupid, he's going to come back and tell you that in order to make this venture possible, I need new refrigeration equipment, I need a new kitchen, I need new carpet and paint, I need a new parking lot, I need a new sprinkling system. We know. You're going to end up spending... You're gonna end up spending at least a million dollars or more to keep this gentleman interested in this arrangement. Why would you continue to put money into a venture that has failed for 16 straight years? You would not be spending your money this way. I guarantee ya. This is, I was thinking this was on the way in here tonight. This is kinda like paying somebody to live in your rental property. And in exchange, you get to share in the profits of his lemonade stand that he's gonna put up out front. Just like I told you 16 years ago, this is gonna fail. This arrangement too is gonna fail. Mr. DeOrio, do we still put on buffets at, at our civic center and sponsor gatherings?
This is not back and forth.
Of course not. We're not gonna, uh, answer the public here. We're competing with ourselves. Do you want the civic center to break even or show some profit?
We're talking about the golf course or the civic center? Civic center's not on the agenda.
It's a comparison. You're competing with yourself. If you're doing buffets and gatherings at the civic center, now you're competing with yourself, like you've been doing for years, really. Why? Now, and Mr. DeOrio, without consulting counsel, spent about $24,000 to do an analysis and determined you need $3.2 million in improvements over there. And now you're dumping up another 80, and there's $104,000 you're dumping in a venture that has failed you for 16 straight years.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne.
This makes no...
Thank you.
Makes no sense. I wish I could thank you for your service up here, but I can't.
Thank you.
Say it.
Thank you for your competent stuff. Anyone else wishing to address council, step, Larry?
Larry Tripp, 1127 East Maple, North Canton. Uh, I've been referred to ordinance 33-13, which reads as follows.
There.
Section...
It pertains to this agenda.
I'm getting there, sir. Would you please listen? I've got five minutes.
You gotta speak to these two.
I have five minutes. Legislation... May I start over, please? I've, I've been referred to ordinance 33-13, which reads as follows. Section 11106A. Legislation may be placed on the council agenda only upon the clerk's receipt of app... of applicable committee's favorable report. Council may, however, by majority vote, suspend these rules and place legislation on the council agenda without first referring to legislation to the applicable committee. This is what you referred to last week, Daryl. I, along with many citizens, received Monday's city council agenda by email on Friday after meetings before the meeting. When I received the agenda for May 13th, I noticed what I considered something strange in looking at the agenda for the special meeting of the whole covering legislation for waste products collection and then the regular council meeting agenda specifically ordinance 41-2019. My first thought was, how could this be? They haven't even discussed this legislation, yet it's already assigned in ordinance number for its first reading. Who initiated this action? Was it the council clerk? Was it her assistant, the law director? Why even have a special meeting of the whole if it's already on the agenda? I questioned several city officials regarding the first reading of this, of this ordinance, who were perhaps unsure as to what I was questioning, but who were also unsure as to whether the first reading was handled correctly. Prior to speak, prior to speaking with Councilman Revolt, I reluctantly posed the same question to Council President, President, and immediately I knew I'd made a mistake as our conversation went silent. In my opinion, he had no explanation other than to say the vote was legal. Was it? Not after reading ordinance 33-13 and listening to Mr. Revolt's explanation to me last week. Mr. Revolt, was ordinance 41-2019 handled correctly? And if not, what actions need to be made to get this ordinance back on track, following the rules of council? Certainly, this is not an earth-shattering thing, but as Council President once said to me not too long ago, rules are rules and they have to be followed. So, Mr. Revolt, I'm gonna let you take it from here. Uh, I don't believe that ordinance was handled correctly inasmuch there was not a, a suspension of the rules to introduce it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry. If anyone else wishing to address council, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Last chance. See you then, we'll move on to old business. We have a motion and a second to read by title only. Second reading, ordinance number 41-19.
So move.
Mr. Garage.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking for the next one.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post?
Post?
Nay.
Nay? Remember, both post. Chair 6-1, Tim?
An ordinance authorizing the Director of Administration of the City of North Canton advertise and receive bids according to specifications now on file on the Director's office and authorize the mayor upon Board of Control approval to enter an agreement for the collection of residential garbage, rubbish, recyclables, and yard waste in the City of North Canton for a five-year period with four one-year renewal options commencing September 1st, 2019.
Thank you, Chairman Sar.
Yes, uh, this is a, a new bid put out. Uh, we've had some discussion and debate on this in, in the committee and got to this point. And, uh, so, uh, we will put this out, uh, make a motion to approve this, uh, in the second ruling, it looks like.
Is there a second?
No, I, I would like to confirm that we did do it appropriately. It is my memory serves me, I don't remember us seconding rules for having a committee meeting, and I'm trying to look back to amendments, but...
Well, I, I think the question is, the question was suspend the rules requiring a committee report.
Okay.
Okay.
So we did have a meeting.
The ordinance doesn't specify written report. Could be an oral report, which is, was, we were in committee, speaking about it. So, we are well within the law here. Just because we didn't fill out a piece of paper, we've been filling out these for how long? We're checking out, who's here? This one?
But we didn't state, don't we normally state before we approve it that?
We normally do. We normally waive committee reports, but we are not required to do that.
But we always do, and I, I think...
But i-if you, i-if you look back at the rationale, why you had these committee reports, it's a form for those out there, and you fill in who's the chair, who's the vice, who made the motion, and if you recommend that it goes on the council meeting. The rationale behind that was that, uh, two clerks ago, the clerk didn't appear for the committee meetings, and so the clerk did not know what occurred the evening before, and those written reports enabled the clerk to help prepare an agenda based on what was written on the committee report started, we have for beta minutes and for committee.
But we always made that objection.
Now, you have, the clerk is at your meeting, the reports that you fill out simply go into a folder, the clerk sits and takes down the information and absolutely knows what occurred in your committee meeting, so the clerk doesn't need your written report. The oral report that happened at the prior meeting stating that you'd like this to be on your agenda or who made the motion and so forth, uh, is conveyed to the clerk at meeting. There's, there's really no requirement for that, that form. It simply goes into a folder that has that date.
So I guess specifically to your question, we've always done that, okay? We've always in words said we are suspending committee report. However, if we went back to try to change the ordinance that Larry referenced, what do we change? It doesn't say a written report.
No, we already have the report, it's in our minutes, so we would give this as first reading as opposed to a second reading. We should start it over. We now have a report in our minutes. So, I understand what you are all saying, but what I'm saying is, those are two different meetings, committee meeting, council meeting, so it's two different, you know, verbatim minutes or whatever, there's two different reports. So by not saying it in the council meeting, we're not referring back to the fact that we just had the committee meeting 20 minutes beforehand, and we didn't say that on the record. If you look back at our record, it'd be like, oh, yeah, maybe last week, no big deal, but we did, we had a committee 20 minutes ahead, we didn't have, we did have opportunity for public speak, but I think to put it on, I think that's just putting it on the record that we just talked about it 20 minutes ago, and we don't have it in the record as far as written and we approved the minutes.
Then for beta minutes, we have video, audio.
But it's a process, and we follow a process, and I feel like we didn't follow the process. So what's wrong with starting over and giving it first reading tonight?
Is it a defined process? Does, I guess is my question.
I think precedent sets the fine pro... I mean, it, we, I've been here a long time, and that's what we always, and I think it just was forgotten. It wasn't like you wanted to start a new process, correct? You didn't purposely say, hey, we're done doing, saying this and doing this, it was just forgotten.
I think it was, it was an oversight.
Right.
That, something that we always do, but it's not technically not required, it's not, you know? Here, here's the thing. You look back, and, and Tim brought it up, two clerks ago, we didn't have a clerk at the committee meeting. We didn't do verbatim minutes, we didn't have aud, we had audio, but we didn't have video. Actually, I think it was a tape, it said tape. Doug, Doug Fulton, go over. Yeah.
I don't, but...
Yeah, you were, that's right, Doug was a clerk.
Two clerks ago, we didn't have back-to-back meetings. We met four times a month, we never missed it, we met Tuesdays on Monday after a holiday. It was, we changed the process enough that I think this process should not be changed. That I think it just makes it clear to the person who maybe will look at this 10 years and says, oh, yeah, that committee report, that committee just happened 20 minutes ago. The public's only had like 10 minutes to think about it and comment on it, and we're moving it forward, but our process was saying the words, we're gonna pass this without an official committee report. Why are we changing that process? I realize it was an oversight, it was, completely, on all of our parts, but that's the thing, we changed the process. Are we gonna, are we gonna stop saying it just because we just did this time? I guess that's my question.
Can, can we?
We need to say it.
Right, we go away.
It may, I mean, it could be.
You can go back and look at each time, and we could have an audit for each time the clerk doesn't have a committee report from each committee chair. And if the clerk doesn't have that, would you validate the ordinance?
Maybe we need to revise it.
Yeah. That, that is, that's a good point as well. How many times have committee reports this sheet not been filled out and we didn't waive? So you could go back.
I don't think very often. I, I don't understand why, I don't think at all. What do you think, Doug?
You're opening up a can of worms, I think, because if, if somebody wanted to go and go back through all the records, you don't have one of these on file.
Can we actually keep these though? I think these were just for you guys to make your record, your...
We keep those now. Like I think Tim said, in the file for this week, we would have those. I cannot speak to what we're sitting right.
I don't.
I understand, I do, I understand, just right now, what happened, because... Daryl, is he here? Yeah, Carl?
I do, we...
I'm sorry?
We, we...
No, I'm not, yeah, Carl.
Well, I think we've got a bit of a conundrum here. I admire the creative thinking, but a report is presumed that it is written. But let's go back more importantly to the committee itself. We expanded committees from three to seven. The fact of the matter is that unless you take a vote that night on that matter, your chair is supposed to have a majority in the committee, approval for legislation. So without a vote that night, we don't do it. I don't know what clears committee or not. I mean, that is problematic.
It's problematic when we have three.
Well, I understand, I understand that.
We never go both.
So maybe the, the task here is to really rethink this, but candidly, I'm for the client to support, we have a requirement for committee report. Whether the clerk has done it or not, back in the day, we used to have typed up committee report, that the committee authorized legislation, doing X for reasons Y. Click 3-0. And that authorized the legislation to go forward, and that was the check and balance for the council, that, you know, if you had an idea and couldn't get it through committee, better well have four, you better have four votes. And I think that was, the idea was to put that as sort of stampede the legislation, but we do have a requirement for report. I believe it has to be right.
If it's the majority, if this majority of council wishes to do that, we'll go ahead and do that, but I, if, if we're going to do that, I'm gonna go back and, and amend that, amend that ordinance to require a written report, so we'll add another level.
Let me, let me do this, let me do this. Let's move this conversation, let's revisit this. You have a motion to read. I can amend this ordinance. And let me amend it by inserting the phrase, committee report is not required.
Fair enough, let's go.
And we all agreed to.
If, if, if we can, if we can, if we...
And then we can have a discussion on, on, with another court on committee.
I can, yes, we'll move that later on.
Yeah.
For the purposes of tonight, to answer our concerns in the audience. You have a motion to read, which you all prepared, and I'm gonna make a motion to amend 41-219, waiving the requirement for committee report.
But then you're saying that it is a, a rule that we had to have, and that is nowhere that I know of, and I'm, I'm not a typical guy like you, that is in there, that it is a presumed thing that was needed from the clerk. I, what happens if someone's sick and doesn't ever fill out, does that mean it was voided?
That means that the vice chairman is to fill out the report.
And I'll bet you that does not happen so many times that you could...
It's still not true. I disagree. I have a committee report at my spot for the last 17 years if it was on my committee.
Okay.
And I've filled it out.
And if you weren't here?
Then my vice chair did. You're my vice chair. It went to you.
Yeah.
You know, if it was in front of you, Mark, you did.
Listen, I, I'm prepared to make a motion.
You already had the motion.
So, yeah, to, to acknowledge that.
Guys, 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 see?
Yeah, whatever.
And let's come back.
Patrick, would you like that? Oh, yeah, I'd like to.
Excuse me, sorry, can I ask one question?
Yes.
If you're gonna amend this ordinance, is it gonna go back to first reading, or are you amending it on second reading?
No, we'll, we'll, I'll amend it second reading.
Yes, just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Yes.
I mean, if you're amending it, why do you have to amend the ordinance? Why can't you just vote to suspend the rules to require a re, a committee report?
I can do that as well.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't think you can tinker with the language in the ordinance.
I'm, I'm agreeable to whatever.
So you just, you, I mean, you were, you were considering a week ago that not, that we could amend the, uh, the ordinance authorizing, you know, contract that had already been done earlier, but just...
Here's, here's, here would be my question. We have a special council meeting. It has two pieces of legislation. We're not technically allowed to amend that agenda.
You actually can, it's just you just can't have a new subject. I believe that so long as you're within the boundaries of the, your subject matter, I believe you can still discuss this.
I'll accept that opinion.
You just can't bring up something new, like introduce new legislation that wasn't contemplated.
Your first reading was void.
Mr. Osborne, this is not up for discussion.
Apparently it is.
Mr. Osborne.
Shut, please.
I know you guys are enjoying it.
I know you guys are enjoying it. Okay.
So you suspend the rules.
So what, what I'm excited to do, is gonna make everybody happy.
Have, have. Have, I do.
Either way. Patrick?
Okay, we're just gonna, uh...
It isn't, you, you listen.
Okay.
Is there a motion in a second to suspend, to suspend the rules for a committee report?
I need to get this done.
Wait, wait, guys, guys.
I'm talking. Is there a motion in a second to suspend the rules for a committee report, ordinance number forty-one dash nineteen?
Before you do that, I think you've got a motion to read this. I'm not a parliamentary, but you've got a live motion here.
You already voted on the motion to read.
We voted to read it.
Six-one, you said that.
Right.
So it hasn't, it hasn't been read yet.
It was read.
Oh, did you read it? Did you read it, Betsy?
Now we're, now we're waiting for a motion to approve the second reading or not.
All right, let's approve it, and then I'll make a motion that be amend the agenda to include item five A, suspension of rules.
Is there a motion in a second to adopt a second reading ordinance forty-one dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Remember, vote opposed. Pass six-one. Is there a motion in a second to suspend? What am I suspending?
Requirement.
Requirement for committee report for ordinance number forty-one dash nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. New business. We have a motion in a second to read by title only. First reading ordinance number forty-two dash nineteen.
You guys wanna leave the room?
No, I'll just, we'll just...
They're staying here. Yeah, there's no discussion. This is, we're voting. Is there a motion in a second?
Excuse me, can I, do you want us to suspend the rules for the committee report on this one as well, since you had that committee twenty minutes ago?
Yeah, yes, we do.
Four seven.
Four seven.
The committee gave a report, orderly.
I know. It's okay. Okay. Is there a motion in a second to suspend the rules for a committee report for ordinance number forty-two dash nineteen?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I've asked, already asked for a motion in a second to read by title only, ordinance number forty-two dash nineteen. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Checking. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed and staying?
Same.
Okay. Three abstentions. Kiesling, Serrata, Fonte. Tim?
An ordinance authorizing the appropriation of eighty thousand dollars of the City of North Canton funds from the unappropriated resources of the general fund for management fees and initial operating funds for both course and center operations.
Thank you. Chairwoman Kiesling.
Just talked about this a little, a little while ago, um, for the interim funding for the golf course and center operations.
Motion. Yes, sir.
You know, I think there is obviously a great deal of concern about what's occurred at Arrowhead over the years. I think none of us are happy that the formulas we've applied have not been successful. And I can only speculate personally as to the reasons. With the lack of my public speculation, and I think I share this with everyone else, shouldn't necessarily mean that we don't care about the outcome. The easy thing to do when we have a situation like this is to be critical. The more challenging task is to come up with a way forward. I think Pat and his team have done a good job in recasting this opportunity for this situation as we move away from golf to bank. We don't have golf, but the idea is to really look at this as a bank facility with the expectation that we can at least break even and perhaps achieve some profit. But the fact of the matter is, is that current operators were not successful, but what are the options? And I think this is the challenge as we go forward, people who are critical of this approach. What's the option? And I lay that out for Chuck and anyone else, that what's the plan? And does the plan make sense for the taxpayers of North Canton? So for that reason, I'm prepared to support this, Mr. President.
That looks pretty good.
Moving to a second reading?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Staying.
Opposed?
Abstention.
Serrata, Fonte, Kiesling.
Abstention.
Four, oh, yes, sir.
Before we conclude, I would just like the record to reflect passing of Richard DeHammett. He was a longtime police officer in North Canton. Served the community well. And my old courts enjoyed a pretty productive and happy retirement, but we are grateful for his service. It's good guy.
Okay. Include the agenda, motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go.
Okay, gentlemen, ladies, thanks for sticking around.
And it's, and the interesting thing is, say, if we're gonna go after these guys, they've already started. And out there, he said, it's true, and we're gonna just win. How about a whole car?
So are they missing it?
Actually, they're also...
Are they missing it? On the record, I don't know. We didn't use to have this one. We didn't use to have any break here. Now, we have everything. What does he have to say?
More information.
She's keeping here for that. Why are we doing that? It's my question. And it must not be missing. I can't even tell that somebody. So, and I didn't realize you were...
You know that, Charlie, just like I did.
I didn't need to know. They stick them on there.
Let me see. If you guys are first, I'll just... Well, so, but it doesn't change, you have to call it great.
Yeah, no, I think it could be, yeah.
So I think Thursday is definitely a...
But what I would do, pressing council, you know, that's...